Okay. Welcome to the February 17th Riley County Commissioners Meeting. If you'll stand and join the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Francis, did you have any comments just joining?
The only comment I have is I'm just as facile in working with technology this morning as I've ever been, so.
Any public comments?
I would just reaffirm.
Kelly, did you come up?
Yeah. You have to state your name.
My name is Donna Bear, and I want to thank all of you for coming up to Leatherfield Thursday night and hearing from the residents of Northern Riley County. I would reaffirm what you heard on Thursday night. We are intent on getting, at this point in time, an ambulance location in North County to serve the residents that are outside the city limits of Manhattan. And it isn't a matter of if, it's a matter of timing. And you have the money at this point in time, not only to do Station One, which has been sorely needed for 15 years, but to also encompass the North County Station and get that job done to serve your public. Thank you so much.
Kevin Bellamy, resident of City of Riley. And again, I just want to reaffirm, Donna mentioned, thank you guys for coming out to our little neck of the woods. And just real briefly, I won't take up too much of your time to discuss, you know, the EMS and ambulance matter in North County. You know, as Donna said, the people you heard from during that meeting were only a fraction, actually, of the residents in North County who are very concerned about not having an ambulance available in a timely fashion. And I think if it was not for a high school basketball game, you know, we probably would have had people lined up outside the, outside the building. And I'm sure, or at least I hope, that when you left the meeting, you saw why or heard why a 24/7 EMS ambulance service is needed in North Riley County. People's lives are on the line. And for the time I have remaining, I just, I just want to address the number one cause of death in the United States today. And it has been for many years. It's not cancer. It's not even COVID. It's, it's heart disease and heart attacks. Heart attacks are double the amount of COVID in cancer cases, double again. So whenever I teach a CPR, AED, or first aid course class, I go into detail about what we instructors call the cardiac chain of survival, which includes, there's five steps. Now, the first thing you're gonna do is when you come on emergency, you call immediately for help. You call 911. Then, if you're trained to do so, you treat the victim, whether it be given CPR or some other form, depending what the emergency is, the use of an AED or an automated external defibrillator, and of course, finally, the arrival of the ambulance and getting the victim to the hospital as soon as possible. And of course, the integrated post-cardiac arrest treatment, which, you know, if our ambulance is equipped with the necessary instruments, you know, they can go ahead and start that. Now, a breakdown of any of these five steps on the cardiac, of the chain of survival greatly reduces the victim's chance of survival dramatically. And I wish we could spend more time addressing the number one cause of death, heart disease. I wish we could spend more time talking about heart disease today in America than we do, you know, this COVID situation. And, you know, I'll just close and tell you why I'm so passionate about getting the staffed ambulance in North County. Some of you may have heard my story, but please bear with me and let me share it a final time. And while working at Fort Leavenworth, I had a heart attack, which not only included one trip with an ambulance, but two trips. And finally, I reached, ended up with the Providence, at the Providence Medical Center in Kansas City. And I had what they called a widow maker with a 90% blockage to the heart. Two days later, open-heart surgery with a quadruple bypass. And why do I share this story? It's quite simple. You know, if this heart attack, my event took place in the City of Riley or anywhere in North County, chances are very good I would not be standing here today talking to you. And it's only by the grace of God that I am. And I can only put that, you know, and I say that because I was fortunate to have two ambulances readily available just like that to get me to a hospital. That's not the case up here in North Riley County. And of course, my story is not unlike many of those that you heard from the public the other night. Stories they shared and hopefully showing you how having an ambulance would have made a huge difference in North County. You have seen the passion in the public's eyes and felt the heartache of them revisiting their need for an ambulance and how it would have made a huge difference. Do the right thing, make a difference in people's lives, and I ask you all to support placing an ambulance and EMS staff in North County. Thank you very much.
What else?
My name is Rod Cook. I'm a retired Riley County police officer. I've volunteered for a fine line over 20 years. Currently part-time deputy, Potawatomi County. So I've seen both sides of the EMS responses, Riley County's and Pot County's. The biggest difference between the two, Pot County has ambulance states throughout their county, central locations. Still, response times are long, but not near as long as a response in North County, in North Riley County. I've been on scenes in North Riley County. Thank goodness Donna over here, we've been on a number of scenes. We need an ambulance in North County. Response is a lot longer up there than any response time, even in Pot County. So I'm not gonna say much more than we need an ambulance up there. Thank you.
Comments? So, Commissioner comments?
Well, Monday after our meeting, I followed up on a lot of phone calls and emails. I did have a discussion with Leavenworth EMS Director about their paramedic SGB program, which is transitioning to a full-time ambulance service in the area. So it was a real interesting discussion and it broadened my, my knowledge of this issue. Tuesday, I attended the meeting of the Master Food Plan Leadership Meeting on Zoom. Under discussion was the development of the plan to present to the city and to the county concerning the goals established by that committee that were based on a community survey, which was conducted several months ago. On Wednesday, I attended the Riley County Local Public Health Systems Assessment Program for most of the day. It began with a general orientation and overview of the meeting process, and it had determined that there were 10 essential services being assessed in the county. All participants were assigned to a specific team session consisting of five breakout teams. And each team covered two essential services. The team I was on was Session B, which studied Essential Service Three, which was information, education, and empowering people about health issues. So it was a real community discussion, you know, about what's going on in the community, what groups are available, how they can get better. And we had like a grading scale, you know, from very good to very bad, you know. So it was, it was really a good session. It went on most of the day and we had really good discussions. And, and I actually met some really new, some new people that I really enjoyed meeting, which I hadn't before. The meeting was sponsored by Riley County Health Department and was really well organized and presented. Very valuable experience. So there will be a report coming out on, on all the results from all the teams. So I'm looking forward to that.
That's what my question is, is it gonna reset?
Yeah.
I know they had that the same, but somebody would.
At the same time, yeah.
Same, you're both at the same time, but somebody.
Yeah, well, I wanted to go to Topeka too, but I thought this was really important.
That's good.
I will share with you. Yeah, because it was really extensive. A lot of people were there, filled with all the teams. So that's all I have.
Tuesday afternoon, I had my monthly meeting with the Board of Directors of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Some of our items in that meeting were just several updates to policies and bylaws that will add several non-voting officially, non-voting ex officiate positions to, to the board. City Manager Ron Fear gave a presentation on the Green Valley Annexation. That's the city. Put it to the side, at least for the moment. I think we probably need to be putting that on our radar after all. I'm just not feeling comfortable, particularly when it comes to law enforcement, which wasn't discussed during this discussion and, you know, Riley County subsidizing law enforcement over in another county. I'm not going to be in favor of that. And that's gonna come up at some point in time, so.
Well, there's emergency services too.
Yeah, I think the way I understood that, that the city will, will provide that separately because they can. I don't know how they'll coordinate that necessarily. That's something they still have to work out with the, the RCPD side's gonna be a big one there, so. Discussion was also had of base grants. What we were discussing with Amanda a week or so ago. They're gonna work through a couple of things and with a couple of other entities to bring some of those dollars in locally. Couple of the local agenda items to work on through 2022 with those and trying to get with each of the local governing bodies in the region and discuss the goals and outlooks there. Hopefully that'll be in place by the time we have that retreat. They moved it to May. Whatever date that was, May 12, somewhere in there. Some other good news, we're getting the K-State High School Two-Way Tournament back. March, first weekend in March. So that'll be good. Houston brings that pretty good crowd and keeps things kind of busy there in early March. And we got an update on some other events and items from just the regular chamber staff. Yesterday, of course, I was up in Topeka. We're at State Capitol for KC's first county day at the Capitol. Thought it was a, it was a pretty good success, to be honest with you. It was pretty well attended, set up pretty well. Affiliates were at their own tables and stuff set up. I was kind of curious to see what that was going to look like. It was good to be able to be onsite, network with other commissioners, people from the member associations, county, county lobbyists, and of course, the state lawmakers and executive officials that they were going through their day. So certainly a good day to be in Topeka, much less to be really outside, so. And K-State got a pretty rather ugly win. I'm gonna call it against West Virginia last night. Again, I guess a win is a win, so that's all I got.
Monday I met with Amanda about some of the options they're looking at, keys from that letter we got. And then also just some general questions about developing a county, some of the people bringing up with me. And then I also talked to Greg Henry about a property, picture property appraisal, some questions on. And Monday evening, instead of him facing the basketball game, it was a good game with correct outcome.
Yes, yeah.
And Wednesday, I also attended the county day at the Capitol. Chance to talk with some commissioners from other counties, which is good, and prepare notes on how we deal with them. Saw Tom Hock, talked to him a little bit, tried to catch dots and missed connections. He was always going the other direction. I tried to catch him. And I saw Jim Ganant from Manhattan Tech. He was, he was there working on some more funding to tech, waiting for a test, to testify or something. Karen Tyson stopped solving, stopped, she was walking. You know, saw some people that, that talked to a lot of people there and thought it was a good, a good meeting. It was a first try at it.
Yeah, I, I guess they'll probably do it again.
That would be great. Any items for the intergovernmental luncheon?
I took that still on Zoom, this for this month?
Last I've heard.
Okay.
This one's Zoom, the next one.
Plan it personally.
That's nice.
No, it would be on the 28th. We're not here on Monday. Following Monday.
Okay, next commissioners, Riley County Personal Action Form for Cheyenne Stewart, Public Health, North Health Department Separational Service. Please sign, please. Commissioners, any corrections for minutes? I got motion.
Move that we approved the minutes from the February 14th, 2022 Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
And moving second through the minutes of the February 14th meeting, votes in favor. All right. Now, the tentative agendas, look commissioners. A little longer on the next one. Any items for next week's press conference? Okay, next commissioners, you have Shiloh Hager at nine o'clock.
Yeah. Wind was coming from the east.
Yeah, this morning when I walked in.
Kind of like spanking right into the corner here, is it?
Yeah.
No, it's a stiff wind. It blows my hair around.
It must have been a strong wind.
It was, that's what I'm saying. Came in here, my hair was standing up. I'm like, yeah, probably did. Tried to step to the side of the building over here. Have to go peel it back off when it warms up.
Well-sealed windows in here. You can actually see him moving the strings on John's windows. Spits off the first.
That's about 15 degrees cooler in there.
It is. It's definitely cooler.
Yeah.
No, I thought maybe it wasn't down pretty, and I was. Robert set fire at our, out our way earlier this week. I heard there was two. Oh, really?
Guess you're putting ashes from the fireplace in the plastic bucket inside the garden.
Made that mistake once when I was young and knew the fireplaces in Darnell, where I rented a farmhouse. And I got lucky, you know, it didn't cause anything. Went out there, buckets. It's not the bring it out, the young.
They do religion on that.
Yeah, for sure.
Because that would have done. The grass, we might have caught.
Yeah. You're learning that. The thing is, there's a few houses around that area.
One between, one right there on top of the hill.
What's the deal with that house right on the end of Low Water Crossing Road, that River Hills Road there? That has that gate, that little, you know, real small house with that garage?
I think that's it's small. Get away from.
I was gonna say, because I don't think anyone's living there, or I wondered if someone was using it as an Airbnb or something, because you just don't see vehicles very much.
I think it's just a item.
So really?
The other one was over on 52nd. Gentlemen then realized.
The day before. Come on, Shiloh.
Morning. A little warm out there today.
Is it not warm enough out there?
It's nicer here than Wichita. Wichita's.
Yeah, everything's south. I didn't want to see it, but I would like seeing some moisture. You know, that's the bad thing. I know you don't get a lot from snow, but it's better than what we got. I know, that's kind of how I am.
Crazy, because I saw Chor is supposed to be almost 16.
And I heard upper mid-60s on Sunday?
Yeah.
And then we're having like 22 for a high next week on a day, singing it into low, but it's just nuts.
Like, don't wonder everybody has a cold and.
Yeah.
It's nuts.
It's fans. I've never seen it back, and it's on a weekly basis. I've never seen it like that, yo-yo, back and forth, back. With absolutely no moisture at all. And Western Kansas is like an extreme drought. They're like 12, 12 inches, 12 and a half inches behind.
Really?
We're still at that like four to five range, believe it or not.
It was so weird yesterday when I was going with the dogs out. It just felt like, it's a spring morning. I was like.
Yeah, it was weird going up George yesterday morning. I was like. I parked over on the south side and wanted to walk, had to walk all the way around the front side there of the Capitol. And it was, it was pretty nice. A little breezy, but pretty nice. Sun was out.
How was county day?
It was good. Yeah, it was good. And they set it up really nice and it's pretty well attended, I'd say. It's hard to get everybody from Western Kansas, obviously. Inside of that, but there were a few people. Had a long conversation with a gentleman on the Convention of States. You can tell there's a lot of, I don't know. Lot of frustration.
Yeah.
Talking to some lawmakers and just people who've got boots on the ground there. They're frustrated this year.
Think the whole environment creates a lot of frustration for all of us on a daily basis, you know, different employees and.
That's trying to, sharing the trend, solutions and problems still exist, and that's.
Well, you've got a contingency of people there that hate government.
Yeah.
And it's on from two separate perspectives. And so, I mean, it's exactly, it's very, very difficult.
Like I said, that, that is so, so true. But when the pandemic hit and everything was going south, where did everyone come? Where did everyone come? Francis talked last week. One county had a problem trying to make. Yeah, I remember that issue. And then there's another.
Under the ground.
Yeah, then there was another deal. One county had a problem and they tried to make the solution perfect, and so you said that county pays them.
Because of the divisions, yeah. That was a hell of a game too, came down to the end there for Auburn one, but. Say what? Oh, I'm sorry.
Been doing this record rights this weekend.
At least for the SCC tournament, at least for another month. I don't know what you think of Bruce Pearl, but you know, it's a pretty good coach, that's for sure. He can recruit and gives kids to play. As long as he stays out of trouble.
Yeah, well, he gets there.
Yeah. Yeah, probably would be too, yeah. Especially me, SCC. Right, I, well, not today. Not today. Maybe tomorrow, maybe 16.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shiloh Hager with the Riley County Revenue Reports for the month of January. Pleased to say that we've started 2022 off on a pretty. Pleased to say that we've started twenty twenty-two off on a pretty, pretty good footing. We ended the month of January, it was a balance in the general fund of twenty-four million seventy-eight thousand three seventy-two seventy-one, which is just over four point six million compared to the general fund balance in January of twenty twenty-one. And we're currently still holding just over seven point one million in the ARPA funds. And we ended the month with a ending fund balance of sixty-three million ninety-three thousand eight thirteen sixty-two. You can see. Our tax holding funds have gone down significantly significantly because we made our first distribution in the month of January. The next distribution will happen in March. And when I take out the ARPA funds and compare our total fund balance to twenty twenty-one, we're up six point three million from where we were at this point last year. Our investment income for twenty twenty-two, and we had a net deposit to the general fund of two thousand six ninety-three sixty-two. I am pleased to report that our interest rate on the checking is point one two, which.
When you say pleased.
It's, you know, we haven't seen that for a long while. It's been in the point oh. So.
Maybe we should plant money and just see if. Yeah.
So that represents a two point four four percent over what was budgeted year to date. And you could see what are what we budgeted for rep or for interest revenue for this year. We were very, very conservative compared to what we did last year, so. So then our general fund revenues, we ended the month. With total general fund revenues of fourteen million eight seventy-four seven oh eight forty-three, which is four percent over what was budgeted for the month of January. And if I go to the next slide, you can see here that we have collected forty-seven point two one percent of our total budgeted revenues for twenty twenty-two. Which that represents that first half tax collection distribution that we did in January. In sales tax, we, Riley County's portion of the sales tax, we deposited three hundred and fifty-three thousand two twenty-seven forty-four, which is a twenty-four point six seven percent over what was budgeted for the month. This does represent November sales, so. Next month's revenue should see December sales, which is this November, December, your start of your Christmas season.
Is there any way of knowing how much inflation is incorporated into that increase?
Unfortunately, there's not. I just.
It's a large part of it.
Sure.
Could naturally assume at this point, so.
Oh, definitely, definitely. Here you can see when I looked at year to date, sorry. Year to date, we are up fourteen point four eight percent compared to January of last year. And as you remember, last month's was a pretty big month, so we are down seventeen percent compared to what we. What total sales tax collected in the county for last month. And then a breakdown of your use tax and sales tax. You can see here, and there's a thirty, almost a thirty-six percent increase in use tax compared to this time last year. Any questions about any of that? So just some other information that I thought I would go ahead and share. I ran an abstract for the month of, the end of the month of January, and we have a forty-three percent uncollected. Uncollected balance of our taxes, so. Still above that fifty percent, so we had quite a few, like I said, paid in full for that first half. And we did mail out delinquent tax statements were mailed out here in the month of January. Just to remind you, after fourteen days after we send out the delinquent notices, then we send out. What are called sheriff warrants for the uncollected personal property tax that was due. That just kind of helps us start the, the collection process, so those will go out at the end of this week. We've been very, very, very busy with commercial and heavy trucks. We've seen almost a seventy-one percent increase in the number of transactions that we processed in January compared to last year. There have been several counties, just to remind you on commercial, you can go anywhere in the state to do commercial. And then Riley County is one of ten counties that do IRP transactions, so. We're seeing an increase in some of our IRP work. We're also, there's several counties in that vicinity that have decided to stop doing commercial work, so they're coming here as well, so. I, February is going to be, we're even busier. We've, I've got a couple of people just working full time just on commercial work right now, so. Heavy truck season does end official or unofficially at the end of February, that's when those are, those renewals are due is February twenty eighth. Also, at the end of February, names that begin with the letter A should also be renewed by February twenty eighth. The last and final thing I just wanted to update you on is I testified last week for our motor vehicle fee bill and house transportation. They worked the bill on Tuesday and it did pass favorably out of the committee. So I just checked before I came over and it's on the general, it's uh, but under the line still, so. We still have some work to do, but it's further than we've gotten the last, the last session, so.
Yeah, they did mention that yesterday and they were very impressed with your testimony and the president of your association.
Well, thank you.
That came up.
Thank you. So, but anyway, so that's, so we'll just keep our fingers crossed. I'll keep you posted as to. There was an amendment presented to raise it from ten dollars to twelve dollars, but that didn't pass, so it's still at the ten dollar flat. I will get your questions if they happen. I'll see you next month.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Next Commissioner Julie Gibbs at nine fifteen.
I was wondering if you got a new car.
Did you get permission? Yes.
Okay.
Have to ask the offer because she didn't want me out on that. Use your microphone, Rick.
Sure.
Who's that messenger? Russell about the naked snow angel competition.
Are they actually getting snow into Pico? Didn't look like a radar this morning. It was like it was even east of there.
No, I saw it. I just sent a picture out somewhere. I'll get that one outside.
That's a big Thursday problem to everybody. All I left them at home last night.
Russell's got a good sense of humor, dude.
Morning, Julie. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Move to recess with the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Health. I'll second it. Move in second to recess. Commissioners and the Board of Health on favor.
Okay, good morning. For two reasons. First is to get approval for out of state travel for Renee Lucas. She is wanting to attend the preparedness summit in April in Atlanta. This is something that traditionally that FAB coordinator does attend every year, and I believe it was virtual last year. And she did get a grant from NHO to be able to go to this summit. It covers everything from travel to the registration, all her bills, so we do not have to take money out of her. Her vet grant to be able to attend this. How did you get that grant? Be able to go. I'm happy that it's not virtual. It's actually. Any questions on this?
Okay, make a motion that we approve the out of state travel request for the. In A double C H O. A conference in Atlanta, Georgia.
I'll second that.
And move to second, second to approve the travel request on favor. I.
Chairman sign please.
This next one is a request to fill a position in the clinic. We've had some more turnover, unfortunately. So this would be our health equity nurse position, which is fully funded through supplemental funds from K H E. And I did make some changes to the position description based on that supplemental funding. It's in that grant, it talks a lot about health equity, and that is primarily something that Cheyenne Bassler, she was in this position actually for less days tomorrow. And she did a lot with, so she has done a great job of reaching out to entities and businesses, schools in the county to reach people where they are. So she set up vaccination clinics two to three times a week at these different entities. We'll probably scale back on that come March. We'll probably only do about one day a week, just because our demand for vaccinations has gone down. And but we will still get out there and do remote clinics with this position. So I titled this health equity nurse instead of vaccination lead for that reason, because they were going out to some remote clinics and really meeting people where they are. And really helping with the vaccination efforts for health equity. And I've also changed under the status of this position, I've made it. Appear it that this is benefits eligible, so the benefits are included in that funding that is supplemental from K H E. So it is a temporary, but a longer term temporary, so the benefits eligible, so we can keep this person on, this individual on through twenty twenty-four, and we intend to do that. But this is a full-time position through the clinic.
I would make a motion to fill the health equity nurse position.
I'll second. Move in second to fill the health equity nurse position on favor.
All three signs please.
Great program yesterday.
Yes, it was good. And we had a good turnout, so.
But you can.
You did a really good job, but.
Yeah.
I'm anxious to see the full report.
Yes, me too.
I've never done like scanning thing yet. I looked at it last night and went, oh, I gotta full up. Scan code to do a survey.
Cue codes.
Cue codes. There we go. Cue codes, there we go.
Guys don't sound enthused about those.
Get a restaurant, is it there? I'm not so sure modern's better than how we had it. In a lot of regards.
Yeah, we had a question come up yesterday in group I was in about. What do the younger people, do they read a newspaper?
Do they know what a newspaper is?
Students there, you know, and yeah, it was just like, well, we're, and well, where do you get your news? And she listed off all these, hang on. Okay.
Yeah.
There wasn't even the collegiate, you know, it's like all sorts of different sources.
I could see the gears grinding in there. Young start.
I was just thinking, you know, I've got a stack of CDs at home, I need to do something with, I can burn you some. Some Snoop Dogg and some other things, some Super Bowl halftime show and.
If you want to switch views, I've got albums.
Those make a frisbee.
They're being very bad.
They're too bad.
Actually, they really are, they really are.
I lost mine somewhere in the middle of something. Yeah, the whole box of Rolling Stones and Beatles. Yeah, I don't know where they got some of those.
My baseball card flung.
You may have lost them then.
Somebody was moving me that snake.
My daughter's the one that keeps on like modern stuffs.
Well, you can get turntables.
Yeah, they're gonna be kind of popular right now. People buying new turntables to play them on, it's kind of popular now.
I'm sure if you looked up top, that was part of the Super Bowl halftime show too. What was turntables?
I scared that it got into One Direction. Gotcha, I'm gonna smack if you put your hand on it.
Thank you.
In motion commissioners?
I would make a motion to. To recess the book of the Board of Health and. Return to the report. Sure, I'll add you.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
I'll second that. Excuse me, move in second to recess of the Board of Health and we convene the Board of Counselors. On favor. Next, Commissioner Clancy Holman at nine thirty. And Rod, Donna and Kevin, if you guys want some coffee, grab some, there's someone at the redemption there, so. You're gonna be hanging out, she's gonna be hanging out with us for a little while, there's some of that crap there.
And there's a vending machine.
Another place officer to drink some coffee.
It's strong. It will make you. No doubts. Did you go jogging this morning? Gonna say, you're brave.
Oh, it's gonna be a lot better tonight, though.
Chases, and he's a herder. So every time he sees a jogger, he tries to run after him. He's got that inbred.
Works okay for a dog, but don't do that as a human.
No. I have to hold him back. Chase after.
You a bike rider? Yeah, he keeps like something, something like he didn't do it. Daniel with you? That's one nice thing about a small town, you can do it comfortably now. And leisurely and not have to worry about your wife.
My brother's one of them. Long time, he was, he got his riding, you know, big models. Sixtieth birthday, he was sixty miles.
I got a nephew in. I got a nephew in Emporia, he does the dirt road bike races. He's done a couple hundred mile races, you know. Brand, I said brand, that's just out of disrespect for the man who had been in the vehicle.
I've got a mountain bike, so it's considered my garage for a long time, it's really nice and fireproof, right, nice.
He's big, he's been to his bikes past the amount of car, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's about that, just like a bike and son, he's a old life bike, so he has wrote nicely. I got on that, oh, difference between them. Hundred dollar bike inside of it.
Light weight.
So smooth, we can just take off. Amazing difference. But they do walk straight most. Levy trail.
That's part of the bikes that get on the end of it.
Mike's like crazy as a kid, but not since then.
Like, and it's a nice road, Pete's road.
That would be a little sketchy.
They like to ride, they like, and it is nice, right? There's so many curves and hills, you can pop up over and over again, right?
And it's not that wide.
Yeah, no shoulder.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Now you live too much for that.
Send a couple friends and he has to send grass messages. Should come in. Church, yeah, ten black churches. Okay.
And my nephew, his parents live in Oldsburg. Sometimes he'll, he'll leave several hours before his wife and kids going to Oldsburg. To ride all the way to Emporia and she picks him up in Emporia, not Emporia, but I mean, Council Road, you know, or something halfway. So, yeah, he's big into it. Case they chance against OSU. Up with OSU, they're not good. Good, that's there. That's there, if we played better on the road, it seems like. They did the last game.
And they get rolling. Other times they just.
Yeah, I mean, you figure the amount of points they made up in that last game and won by that much margin. They scored a lot that second half.
Yeah.
They've done that a couple times this year. Behind but decent margin, even the half of that, but won by a pretty good margin, you know, it's like.
Yeah, Saturday. Saturday.
Yeah, I was in town working, I was heading home during the game. They're way behind, I got in the house and they're ahead. They're behind by a pretty margin too. Clancy, you're waiting for Commissioner to return?
Oh, let's just go forward without him. Just kidding. He's waited on me before. Did everybody manage to fight their way to the office through the snow?
Yeah. Stuff, now fall of the snow cloud, yeah. That's my fault, I was trying to talk to pharmacy. Sorry, Clancy.
No problem. Good morning Commissioners, Clay, Kelly County Councilor. Want to do another kind of legislative update, if I might. Originally, you know, when the, we talked with our contract lobbyists about when would be a good time to have. A Zoom updated legislative conference. And I thought, you know, the earlier the better. Turns out, that would have been a tremendous waste of time. I think. And some of the later dates that they proposed in March are probably going to work best anyway. To see what survives turnaround and kind of get an idea of what items are actually likely to move. Both among those we, the board has actively supported. And among those items were maybe either holdover items, which are bills of concern. Or. Items that do manage in, from the board's platform to maybe have some potential new life. Depending on what committee they're in and whether it's exempt or otherwise survive turnaround. And so with that in mind, I'd like you, I don't need a date from you today. Because I want to talk with Tom Bruno a little bit, confirm what would be a good date in his. Perspective, a couple of alternative dates. It would make sense to schedule an online updated legislative conference. I will then run those past you and see what works best for you. Obviously, I think we ought to, I think we can find a date during a regular meeting, much like we do the regular conference. So anyone who wants to can zoom in and at least observe if they want to, members of the public. But I think that would be worthwhile. So you might just kind of bear in mind that I'll be coming back to you with a couple of alternative dates that work for the. Majority of our delegation. We never can find a date that works for everybody on the legislative delegation. At least that's rare. But I'll run those past you, see what works. So be, bear that in mind as you look at your calendars for March. And then bear in mind also, if you have particular legislation that interests you, that we've talked about. I know we've, there've been quite a few items that've come through on the Harvard reports, quite a few items discussed publicly and quite a few items that you've weighed in on. And one way or another. But let's, I'd like to get a feel for what particular items you'd like to see on that agenda. For a follow up legislative conference. And this doesn't have to be anything we've talked about previously with our delegation. But we can at least pare it down to something that most concerns you and get some kind of feel for. Where these items stand in terms of the ability to get some votes for it, maybe move it on to some floor debate. Or potentially even further in the remaining parts of the session after turnaround, so. And in the interim, if you have anything right now that you're particularly concerned about, that you want to let me know, I will follow up on that. Or if it occurs to you during the rest of the meeting. I'll be available throughout the, throughout the meeting this morning. And if you have something that comes up, you want. Some kind of update individually on specific items, just let me know. And I will follow up on that in the meantime. Does anyone have any questions about that or about other items that we discussed up to this point? Doesn't have to be a legislative one, be glad to try and answer it. And believe me, I feel much better than I sound.
Okay.
And my voice is, is one of kind of the last thing that's remaining to recover here.
Could just finally be puberty.
Gosh, I hope so.
Clancy, did you say you were, you would want to schedule that during a regular meeting or a special meeting? I couldn't hear.
No, I'm sorry. No, it makes sense to do it during a regular meeting, I think we can find some time, but the most of the delegation would be available. I don't see any reason to try and do a special meeting unless, unless that's our only choice. And obviously, the board would make that final decision. I think we can find a spot. Where we can schedule a time that works for all of you and that also works for the majority of our legislative delegation.
They're offered a certain point for a break, or don't they have a break somewhere in this in March or is it?
Well, that's why I'm gonna, that's why I'm gonna talk with our contract lobbyists, they will know what works best. And luckily, we have two lobbyists working on behalf of the county. Working together. And even if one of them is not available at some point in March, that works best for the delegation of you. We'll still have access to the other contract lobbyists. Those people on the ground, they have the best sense because they're in daily contact with a number of legislators. And particularly members of our delegation, and they're gonna know what works best. As a time to get most of them together and to get a good feel for what's going on.
I'd actually talked to Tom yesterday while we were at the Capitol, he maybe indicated later in March.
Yeah.
The break comes right around April there, when they get everything done. Come back for the veto session, so you have a clear picture of what's going on. Now, whether that timeframe fits with them or not, or us, or whomever, I don't know, but probably looking at that.
That's good.
Right around spring break there.
Yeah, that's good information and I'll talk to him myself as a follow up, mention that you spoke with him and get a feel for it. I know Tom, I think Tom expects to be gone for part of March, but I can't remember what portion. But that's what I said, even if he's not available, certainly Dick Carter will be. We'll, we'll schedule at a time when those three components are available. One or both of our lobbyists, contract lobbyists, the majority of our delegation and all of you, so. Sounds good, and I, again, I would just as an editorial comment, this has been one of the strangest legislative sessions. It has been my air quotes, pleasure to watch even at a distance. There's some really, I mean, I know a lot of it's ordinary politics, but. When you've got one chamber where everybody's up for reelection and the other one doesn't have to, it puts a real interesting spin on things.
Thank you, Clancy.
Thank you.
Next, Commissioners, you have very fight at ten o'clock for a little bit of a break.
I would add a caveat to that, you know, you've got a handful of legislators that are also. Like a state offices and that adds another weird twist and variable to it. I asked, you know, amongst the ideological differences, because we all know that those are there as a generational. Have we kind of shifted from one generation to the other generation and the style of how they legislate and work through laws has changed. Indicated that it hasn't. It's not that, you know, I don't know if there's a good blend of, you know, old and young, but that's, that's not the issue apparently.
And I would weigh in with one thing too, just as another editorial comment. If, who would think that the way you might actually kill a particular item of legislation in one chamber was to send it to the local government? in one chamber was to send it to the local government? Where it has almost no chance of advancing in terms of legislation which might benefit counties.
So how many constitutional amendments are they wanting to put on the ballot this year? You gotta count.
I'm sorry?
Well, right now, I know there's one for sure, but that's on primary.
There are a couple of them.
There's a couple of them to discuss, but I don't, I don't get the indication that even one of those is gonna, is gonna pass.
Talking constitutional amendment.
Yeah, I would agree, there's at least one, and I think there is more than one. That's been kicked around. I would agree, I haven't heard that they have much of a chance, but who knows?
The strategy with that is you don't put like three, four, five of those on there.
Somebody goes, no, no, no.
And everyone gets confused about which ones they are and.
I guess when I see too many, you know, I'm embarrassed.
I think I'm gonna take all the pieces of that picture out, right on this table here. That way we can just come up and get a little more of the picture on the floor.
Oh, okay.
Get that repaired.
Okay.
Picture of lobby? Oh. Got ghosts in there.
What was the picture of? Although that's a cool picture too. Martin loved the last pictures.
Yeah. Different pictures that got somewhere. There's two on the wall, but one's there and the rabbit is still on the wall.
And a big vibration and stuff.
That, that does happen from upstairs, that, that has happened. I've seen one of those, I've seen one of those in person. Issues with community corrections and clientele out in the lobby.
So solid though.
I guess this is maybe your hanger came off the wall?
No, the hanger's still, the hooks still on the wall.
Guess the picture said I'm done.
Except while it is broke on the thing, but I don't know if that rope came down or it just came loose. I don't know how long it's been there, but it was strange, it came in one day.
We're not close enough for it, Riley.
That was a prescribed burn on Saturday.
What were they burning?
Burning off the fields. I keep thinking that maybe that got away from them a little bit. Maybe that wasn't the best day to do that. Wasn't a training exercise necessarily, just.
Cause I knew it had the burn.
And that doesn't apply to them. But you would think you'd take that into consideration when making a decision to not to do something, but.
It was really strange. I've seen, you know, fields burning.
It was spitting a little bit this morning.
That's how little a lot of sidewalk.
Morning.
No offense, I did not want to get very hard to you, but.
Might not be if you choose to sit next to that window though. Yeah, I agree there. We had a couple of, a couple mornings last February where the boiler wasn't working. It was not, not comfortable. A little chilly in here, right during that cold spell about, about this time last year. Yeah. We talked about it when we talked with him back in.
A lot of things going on.
Yeah, yeah.
We just don't have the experience.
Yeah. Yeah, the problem with that gentleman is he's not in good health physically and mentally. Two separate people that want to do something with the property beneficial. Well, and I talked to Russ Briggs about it. I've seen some property around and Russ wants to do something with it. Said they're friends, he's friends with the gentleman. So I'll give him a good price for that and make up the difference on that. So he doesn't walk away from it without anything. Then we'll just have the property and Jeff Ruckert, the gentleman from Denver, who I've talked to, called me. All want to, all have an idea what to do with the property and be economically beneficial. But we gotta get, we gotta get the property into his hands before he can do that. I'm going back because like I said. What it is that we need to do is that they're gonna split it up or something different. It's gonna use part of it and Russ first is gonna use a part of it. The option. In fact, we talked about it at the couple Mondays ago. Yeah, so we're gonna have to go through that, kind of to go through that tax sale option. It sounds like to me it's all a thing of the sort.
Morning, Gary.
Good morning. How you all doing?
Good, yeah.
Good.
Throw that snow this morning?
Yeah, I managed to track through it. A four-wheel drive truck, you know, you can get through anything with that.
Thought that you were walking to work, you know, one way up.
My mom used to bake potatoes and, and we would hold them in our big pans on the way. Then we'd eat them at lunch. I mean, when you went to eat it at lunch. Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha. And if you believe that.
So you don't think I should go try it? It's eating it afterwards that does it.
You know, they make hand warmers now where you kind of pop them and they. I know it's not the same, you know, it's, it's a little easier to use the Spotify and, you know, QAR codes and stuff. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, but try eating those after you're done with them.
Well, if you use the QAR code, you get the menu, then you get to pick what you want to eat. And you don't have to put it in your pocket. That's the whole point, Rich.
I have no idea.
Sunday, he said. Said that they just warm up. Fireplace or on the stove and put them on. And the grandmother was telling me one time they had ceramic plates or something. Yeah, ceramic actually holds the heat. Fire bricks and fireplaces.
Wait, the next one's saying it'll be colder.
Well, saying. Single digits or low teens or something.
Here's one day next week, twenty-two's forecasting for the high right now. Like seven for the low. Your mid-sixties on Sundays.
Yeah, so I told people.
I want five or six inches of rain.
Snow doesn't really give us much moisture. We need a couple inches of good solid rain.
Well, I agree, but yeah, you're probably gonna get a few. Depending on how much snow it takes, you can't inch of snow to get a inch of moisture. Thirteen inches.
Thirteen?
Well, normally I wash my truck and it rains and that's not working anymore. So I gotta figure out some other. Indian rain dance thing, but I don't really dance. That'll probably work out worse, just make the drought worse. And about the time you do, that's when we do get the. All right. Morning Commissioners. Thank you for having me again. Listening to me, my report is a little bit different this, this time than it normally is. I wanted to talk a little bit about a project because I.
A project because I've been, we've kinda been talking about the. Parking out of the fairgrounds and and so I asked John Ellerman. Probably late last fall and when I looked. About what the what it would cost the materials to pave the big parking lot south of Bishop Stadium. John went above and beyond and did and gave some estimates for the amount of asphalt to take to Blacktop, the north parking lot, which. I I don't think that needs to be done, but this this picture up here, number one is of the. Big parking lot, south of Bishop Stadium, the Carnival grounds, what have you, and west of the swimming pool, the city swimming pools. And then two is also gravel. And then three is actually blacktop already, but the the pool didn't get used last summer. So I think it's set empty and that's where most of the carnival folks parked their. Vehicles last year during the fair. So. What I wanted John to do was tell me how much he thought I just can you give me an estimate and he worked through G I S and everything to. Get the the square footage and stuff and the reason I bring this up is not only from the standpoint of. Of cost, but the convenience is. We got football games, we have track meets, that's not our responsibility. Really, the only thing we have going on there is the fair, but I'm wondering if this couldn't be at some point in time. A joint effort between city, county and maybe the school district. I don't know. I haven't approached anyone else about it, so I I don't know. I want to bring this to you. Just to show you what we were thinking. So I think with the handouts you've got and what I've got up here, if you pave the big part of the parking lot. It's a such area one, so it's hundred ninety five thousand nine hundred eighty five square feet. So it's about a mile and a half of road and if you put two inches of asphalt on top of that. Then you're looking at a cost and then again, that's just materials of about three hundred sixty two thousand dollars. So. It's not a small project and then of course, hopefully at some point in time, it'd be nice to have parking lines out there, but I think that. What has happened out there, some of our fairground workers that told us that worked for David Wallace and Public Works is that. Gravel lot becomes a place for high school kids to go out and cut donuts and kitties and and there's been some pretty close. I know, hard to imagine, but there's been a few safety issues. Where one of our workers has told us that, you know, there were some kids on bicycles and nearly got hit. And and it's very hard to patrol because you can't have somebody there all the time. But but it's been talked about having security cameras put up, but I again, I don't know what that might do long, long term, but. I think paving is something that I'd like for. And I I can take the city commission too, even though I don't really have any pull with them, but discuss with them and the school board about. Maybe splitting the cost of that if the county commissioners are interested in that project at all. So I'm just presenting this as an idea today, not requesting funding, but just wanna take a look at the cost. Now, I assume. If the county, if the county and city would do that together later, maybe it would be donated and but the price of fuel and everything else going up, I'm sure this is this. It it's probably higher now than it was three weeks ago. So, you know.
But I'd like to say that that tenant lot pays for the school. And also sure to help the pools leave all that dust roll off that have to filter out the pool.
Yeah. The pool's the the interesting thing in this equation because obviously the city's talking about an indoor pool at some point in time and there's been talk that. Maybe C E C O becomes that indoor pool. So I don't, I I don't know where that conversation is specifically, but you know, that's probably gonna have to be part of this dialogue as well.
Yeah.
Then if they do make that the indoor facility, then. I think you could probably get a partnership and they would probably want that too for expanded parking. And I guess that would be year round at that point in time, so.
As a point in question, is there, I I mean, I kinda heard that same idea about an indoor pool. Do they have any idea like where that might be placed out there? Would it be in that parking lot or?
Be that pool, they would just enclose it.
Oh, they enclose that.
I've heard everything from a rolling dome to just an actual enclosure, but. That's all I've heard about that, so I.
I think it would be, I would say it's benefit to all three of the entities.
We own that prop, that parking lot.
And and if you remember about a year ago, we went through this whole thing with the with the with the school district about. Use of the grassy lot for a liability and stuff and you had plants and drops and people were gonna agree with the school district because it's really. The grassy area belongs to Riley County is my understanding, but the school district was using it and had been using it, but there wasn't. They they talked about wanting to force some new concrete pads for shot.
That's two years ago.
So I just happened to raise the question, who who becomes liable because it's not school property? So. Somebody gets stabbed by a javelin or hitting him with a shot put or something, you know, where is that? Now, that's probably very unlikely, but you know, unlikely things happen every day, so.
Think we were talking about that because they normally. During the pandemic or whatever, they didn't have it replaced outside to practice, so they're gonna use that. That spot.
Right.
And for that, yeah. That's during the early part of things.
And people do definitely show up out in that grassy area, but we see hammer throwers out there. When the carnival was ready to set up last, there's somebody doing a hammer throw out there. You know, it's like we're uh, we're gonna set up a carnival here pretty quick, yeah, you know, so.
It's not one of the carnival.
No, it's not. Oh, by the way.
Might have brought us a new idea, you know. You have throwing axes nowadays and it's not that far off, yeah.
At least they're not axes.
We do have a different carnival this year. Dan, I don't know if I told you that or not, but Danny Ottawa has decided to retire. Okay, and he has sold a lot of his equipment to an outfit called We Entertainment out of Dodge City or near there and. He's bought most of their equipment, so. He's got a contract out to us now and we're looking at it, so, but probably won't be a big change, well, you know, there's not exactly a plethora of. Carnivals to up there and pick from, so. Any other questions for me? Okay, don't forget our rural revitalization conference next Wednesday. I guess we've got a couple, at least a couple of you coming and so we plan to see you next Wednesday.
I'm gonna stand at the door.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and we are having some door prizes, some pies and some jams and jellies made by local folks, so, yeah. Thanks so much.
Thank you and take care.
Now, John, if you win the pie, you're gonna have to share it.
The second one, I'll be glad to bring in the share. No, I mean, I'll cook it before I bring it in, but that'll be on you.
Next Commissioner Kurt Muldrick, R C P, Interim Director at the ten fifty. Asphalt on that parking lot, big area.
There's actually ones or at least used to be, I guess I haven't been over there far, but there was one strip of asphalt that runs. Kind of perpendicular north and south there from the trail up to the other one over there, so. Guess if we're gonna repave, we must just tear that up. There's a cost to that too, so.
Can you see the uh, dock right down there? I was wondering.
This we. So part of this county, it's down south part. This is all county, this is all county.
Yeah.
School district.
First time I looked at that, I was surprised by how much we actually live over there, basically a full pool there.
Huh, yeah. On that side and that we are.
We have a inner local agreement with them on maintenance or something, don't we, Rich?
On what?
On that area in and around the pool for mowing and cleaning up and stuff.
Boy, that I do not know. John, John, we might know.
Pool is ours.
So they would have to come and show us.
The way that hell thing works there, the mowing step right up to that. Right up to the from the park to the pool is, I think we mow it, the city. John, do you know on that?
I, I think we mow it, but I'm not sure if we end up charging them back for that or not.
Okay.
And I've not seen an agreement. I wanna say David don't think there is one really. But we, yeah, we do a lot of the mowing around there. Uh, maybe not towards the ball fields, we don't, around the skate park, but everything else we do.
Parts of the park, well, well, it's public works. Parks is a division of public works.
Way too big, gentlemen, it's right up here in the park, there's a fighting. Most dog parks have small, small dogs and large dogs.
Is that where the skate park used to be?
No, it's over. It's right off of the parking lot. Yeah, cause I know there's a drive and a place. Over there, so. It's really weird, I've been in dog parks before.
Being their cones for view.
Just not, oh, for the, it's the day, just not motivated.
Weather, school weather, cloudy.
Yeah, I had I had that and some coffee and either it's kicking, hasn't kicked in yet or it's not going to, I don't know yet. That's the, that's D C A F. I'd hate to, I'd hate to see what the regular is. Why, I'd be bouncing off the walls for three days. Yeah, it's all right. End of February here, it's. I think last year on this day was that real, real cold morning, that negative.
The record temperature was yesterday and that that was one of the negative twenty one.
Yeah.
I watched on W I P W.
That was a cold, cold morning.
A cold couple of weeks.
Really, yeah, fifteen days straight, right now, yeah. I think it got over ten degrees for. That's when we had all the energy grids start going down, Oklahoma, Texas. Heard of the term blackouts, but never heard of the term rolling blackouts, that was anything.
It's never been late, always got lights and sirens.
Yeah. Mention that tonight's special meeting.
Yeah, special meeting tonight. We'll find out. You know, ahead of time?
Well, it's no agenda.
Yeah.
It's all executive session.
Yeah. No arguments here.
Yeah, that one is easier because.
Oh, we were up at the uh, Innovation.
You have lights and sirens.
We didn't hear them anyway.
You park anywhere up chief.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
So this will be my first uh, update for the police department as the interim director. And what I thought I'd start off with is I usually get. Because of this, ask the question, so how's it going? So how's it going is in the first two weeks, on day four, we had the shooting down in Aggieville. So that's a a transition just into that and just. An opportunity to express concern over the rise, like I think everyone in the community is, in in gun violence or just violence in general. In the Aggieville area to the past three months, less than three months, we've had. More than one incident of gun violence down there, so. You guys know we're working with our our partners. In the community to help try and address that and see what we can do. That's not an easy task. For anyone, because there's no one thing that can be done, but it is something that we're trying to address with with our community partners. In and around Riley County to deal with that. Then also the department, we continue to try and do outreach to. Along downlines outreach to the communities up north, you know, when the director Butler was here, one of the things I think he did well. Was get out into the community and bring the department to a lot of our government meetings as well as community meetings, more so than we had in the past. And we want to continue to do that. It's gonna be a little more difficult and that's my intention during this interim time because I don't have a. An assistant director that that I've appointed, but will be using command staff who and other officers, other supervisors, who are all eager to. To get out into the community more and I think it'll be a great opportunity for the community to see not just the director, but other other. Individuals as well as teams, entities within the department, so hopefully we'll continue to have that same involvement. It may just not be through one person, but we'll have. A lot more of the employees out there as well, so I kinda wanna reassure you guys that as well as the community. And then another thing I wanna. Focus on or update you on is just our continued effort to recruit and hire, which I know. Probably is what you're hearing everywhere across the community, across the country. But it's it's a real problem, especially in our jail. Right now, our jail is down. Fourteen employees and that's out of really forty five that that work the floor, so that's a significant number and I anticipate that could be up to potentially sixteen within the next month. Down officers, so trying to recruit and really even retain employees, I think. That's probably in my mind, one of the bigger things in the jail. Really across the board, but it's just retaining what we have. As as we lose them, they're working long hours or overtime hours. And they're starting to to wear down, so we're trying to come up with ways to incentivize them, just to to show them that we appreciate them. The extra effort they're having to put into it, so we're devising ways like to do that, because we wanna retain, to stop the bleeding. But then also getting out to the community, trying to recruit. As more weather starts to approach, we'll be able to be out there at more events to recruit where. The administration division is, is, uh, going to be doing more, uh, advertisement through radio, through, uh, different, uh, periodicals. Mentioned some this morning, you can ask him about, uh, Captain Kyle, uh, but we're going to obviously really focus on that, we really need to do something to, to draw people. Uh, which ties into, we'll be presenting here in the next few months, uh, salary survey, uh, to the law board. Because we, we, we need to do something to draw, uh, to continue to, to keep the employees that we have. As well as draw important employees, whereas we know everyone is looking for employees, and we need to, to continue to be, uh, competitive. A great example, I think it's just this week for corrections officers, we had, um, a, a hiring action where they came in to do, uh. The pre-testing, uh, normally you'd have, you know, fifty, twenty-five to fifty people that were going to come for that. Uh, not all of them would show up, uh, we had seven come for it, we're, that were going to come, we contacted them by person, or in person each night. The night before, and the next day of those seven that we contacted said they would be there, only three showed up. And then, uh, we were only able to move two forward in that process. So, just add that, you know, the night before they said they're going to come and then don't, and that's, that's part of that struggle, I think we have. I still think that's a, a good example. Um, and then lastly, the law board meets, uh, as a special meeting tonight, or this evening, uh, just to begin the process of continuing the process of. Planning to, uh, how they're going to do the director search, uh, so that's, that's going to be coming up, I don't, don't have any information on that. But that's something I'm going to try and stay involved in as much as I can, especially to keep our employees, uh, appraised of what's going on, so they know. What's going on within the rate of seeing the process of finding their next director.
All I have, unless you have questions. On your, uh, first topic there, um, has there been any thought or discussion as to. For rather may or may not do in terms of the Aggieville situation there, I, I know I've briefed on at least one email and conversation, I think there's. General concern that it's not all soldiers that are obviously violent, however you want to put that, but, you know. Businesses and the community as a whole doesn't want to see that group. Back on posts and just stuck there, uh, for that reason, so, I mean, what's, what's the balance?
Yeah, and, and that's, uh, that's actually something we have no control over, we have no, uh, we, we, we never approached the military and say, hey, we. Keep these out, no different, we would never approach the university and ask them to keep students out of Aggieville, it's the opposite of that, we, we want more soldiers, we want more. Community members, we want more, uh, students to be involved in all aspects of our community. We do provide them stats and information to help them make decisions that they're having. You know, I don't know that, uh, that, that, uh, that banning a certain group of people from that area is going to. How effective that is, I, I, I don't know if it'll help or hurt, uh, and, and don't even, really, to me, that's not a, a, a. A place the police department would go, we are talking with them on, on suggestions we have that maybe businesses could do. Uh, down there that could do to help improve safety, some suggestions, and again, providing information as they, they ask for. I don't know if that's addressing what you're talking about.
They're talking better than what the conversation seems to be, it seems to be nobody's really kind of looking at the root causes and things and. Addressing that rather than just the one side of it's all, but we'll just keep everybody away, or keep everybody on post, or, you know, there's, there's, there's impacts to that. There's economic impacts to that, there's social and cultural impacts for that, and you know.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out, we had. Over this, the, the course of these, uh, two incidents we're talking about, three individuals from the military. Then, then, that doesn't count the, probably thousands.
Right.
Of military individuals that were down in Aggieville all through that time that did nothing, you know, other than support our, our economy. So yeah, that's, but that's what, what we get attention to, and, and, uh, same thing, we don't, we don't identify that, uh, these three members. Were involved in that, you know, a, and, and I get why, there's, there's certain labels that, that, that are kind of out there, but I don't think it's picked up to. Yeah, to go down that road, but, but I understand that, I think it's something the military has to look at, and they are, on things that they can do. In educating their own, and things that they can help do to prevent. Banning the group of people from locations.
I guess we'll see it tonight.
Next time commissioners, we have Tammy Robinson, second committee.
Are you snowing yet?
I think it's going to miss us.
It's not warm enough yet?
We need to get that walking hallway or again, that used to connect the buildings or something.
Commissioners had actually talked about that at one time, about actually putting a connection, like, third floor over there, you know. So, and actually talked about it at one point in time. They talked about placing an I T there.
Must be sixty-seven on Sunday. I'm going to get with Jeremy and say, hey, get us some rain. I feel better about things going into early March. I can feel like, like through here, things like cold, dry, hands are dry. That to be true.
Morning commissioners. Tammy Robinson, budget and finance officer, I have the monthly cash flow reports, this is for January twenty twenty-two. That puts us at eight point three-three percent into the year. If you look up here on the left side, you can see that our revenue that came in, that's interest income, was twelve hundred and twenty dollars. And then the transfers are, that is our budgeted transfer that we have that's been made. And then for expenditures, we've spent two hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. If you move down to the boxes, on the left side, you have your cash reconciliation, it shows you where our beginning cash is. That's not set in stone yet, because we do have through March that we may still have some expenses coming through in the twenty twenty-one, so that'll be adjusted as needed. But at this point in time, our ending unencumbered cash is nine point six million, you can see right under that, it shows what we have for approved projects. Excuse me, three, almost three point seven million. And then the reserves of two point one million, that gives us unreserved cash of almost three point eight million. In this reserved fund box, I just want to point out a couple of things, on the radio interest reserve, a hundred and six thousand nine nineteen. That is the interest we've received on that project, and those funds will be used to pay that first payment in May. For the lease, and so you won't see that after this point in time. And then we have the hardware refresh, and that's a hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven seventy-eight, that gets put in annually. And that will go up till, eh, year eight, at which time we'll have to pay for that refresh.
How far along are we?
Um, I believe that's five.
That includes this year, including the year we're in, right?
And then on the right side, it just shows you how much our budgeted expenditures were, and then takes the expenditures to date. And it shows you that we've spent three point five percent of our budget, and we've almost hit our targeted revenue of the ninety-nine point four-two percent. Because most of that is that transfer that comes in at the beginning of the year. Are there any questions on this page? The next page is just the detail, which reflects the approved project estimates, what we've spent in prior years, anything that's been spent this year. And then what's remaining.
Uh, Tammy, I have a question, okay, on the R C P V fire range, it shows we still have ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars left. What would that, what is that for, that we were done?
There probably will be nothing else, however, John has not given me to close the project, so until he actually signs the paperwork, I don't show that as complete.
Okay.
And there are a couple of those that's like this right now.
We still got remediation on the other property.
The other property. We haven't asked them to have.
Yeah, we got one.
That was a couple of months ago. I'm, I'm, I'm guessing it's going to be six digits at least, just to clean up for that, that side when we get to. That's probably why it hasn't been closed out, because that would be part of.
But we're also, uh, looking at, you know, other funding methods for those, for that remediation as well, so we're working with our consultants. With the, the ARPA funds, and then the previous COVID funds to see, you know, where that could land, to also have some additional dollars to pay for that. Okay, then the next page is just the depiction that shows you that three point five percent that we spent in comparison to the budget. The next fund is the building cash flow, and you can see in January, we received two hundred and seven thousand, five seventy-four in tax revenues that came in. We spent thirteen thousand, nine seventeen. And our cash reconciliation box on the left shows you that the ending unencumbered cash at the end of January is three oh three, nine sixty-nine. What we've spent to date equates to three point five four percent of our budget, and we have fifty-three point five four percent of our revenue. Again, just a quick snapshot that shows you that three point five four percent of our budget being spent. The next one is economic development, and keep in mind that a lot of these are paid twice a year. And so at this point, we are a little bit skewed on our percentage having been spent because of that, it will even out as we flow through the year. So we have deposited our transfer of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred into the fund, which is a hundred percent of that revenue that we budget. And then we've spent eighty-two thousand, three ninety-four. On the left side, the cash reconciliation shows the unencumbered cash is two hundred and thirteen, one forty-eight. We do have estimated project balances of one sixty-three, three fifty-eight, which would leave us just under fifty thousand in the fund if we spent every one of those dollars.
And that eighty-two, three nine four will be replicated in June or July again, as a second half payment, right?
Not the full amount, and I'll show you why, because if you look at this page, what will be replicated is the appropriations up here. And then, of course, that Riley County general economic development is not spent, it's not targeted at this point, it is available if you have something that comes up throughout the year. And then in addition to that, Commissioner Ford, on the debt obligation transfer, that's already done, that forty-three thousand, nine twenty-five, so we won't see that again. We won't see an additional six thousand, fifty-seven for that auto lane development contract we have in this year, to have two, two more years left to pay on that. And then that F H M P O, we usually have a small amount that comes back in in July. And then, as you can see, I did go ahead and blew out that F H R C contribution, because that's the one you decided not to fund. It was in our budget, so I did leave it there, but I did show that we're not expecting to pay any dollars towards that. Are there any questions? Okay, then the next page again is just a snapshot that shows you where we are in comparison to the legend. Which is that twenty-six point six-six percent. The last one is the sales tax fund, and we did not have any expenditure activity for the month of January. But we did have the sales tax revenue of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, six fourteen, that was deposited into sales tax, and of course, the other half is deposited into the general fund. So you can see the cash reconciliation on the left that shows you our beginning unencumbered cash, and with the revenues that's come in. Our ending unencumbered cash is four million, three hundred and sixty-eight, four oh two. And our revenue equated to ten point four-nine percent for this one. This is just the detail again, that shows you what we approved, what's been spent in the prior years, what's been spent this year, which is zero at this point. And what's remaining, and then the blue ones are the ones that have been completed. Are there any questions on the sales tax? Lastly, we just have one more depiction that shows you we haven't spent anything in comparison to our budget at this point. Are there any questions or anything else that you would like to see, or? Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next commissioners, last time on the agenda, ten fifty, uh, discussing the county meeting service. Because then you would have a cop there.
They had the zoning issue meeting on Monday, didn't they?
No.
That's what I mean.
Didn't realize how well it rode also, huh?
I guess so.
Kinda like this bed. If ever need to have one, just all of that.
Guess time to talk today?
Yes, I have a one thirty, uh, till probably two thirty or three.
I'm just maybe ten minutes in even right after this.
Okay, yeah, it's fine.
Wait a minute, that means you must want something down the road. David too?
David also, smart man.
I guess I gotta burn him a CD with all that stuff on it too now.
That was gonna print it out.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. Put some explanation, and then you realize that's really not what they're saying. Yeah, that was, that was not in my timeframe.
And you guys wonder why Generation X gets so angry and frustrated all the time?
Confused.
No, it explains a lot about Generation X. Or maybe that too. I was looking at the geographical numbers in Kansas, they broke it down by each county, you know, and I'm like, where's the forty to forty nine range? They left us out on that one. Yeah, it did, it really did. Well, you know, there's, there's some old trends you're starting to see, I'm starting to see younger generation wearing MTV shirts and
Oh, really?
Old baby rock, yeah, so it's kinda recycled, yeah, it's recycled. And every time I see one, I'm explaining to them, yeah, there was this thing called videos, and they used to play them on there, yeah. They're like, no way.
I, I don't know, I just thought it looked, you know.
It does kinda look me kinda three D-ish, and you know, hit a couple of different of those, but yeah, like think of YouTube, but think of it on a TV station instead.
But see, that's why I said, you know, I had all of these, these artists on, you know, on, on CD and stuff like that. My kids never had.
Yeah.
The cool thing was, you talk about the lyrics, what are they saying, a lot of times you can go to the back of it, a lot of them have, pull out, and have the words.
This was deep explicit, and it was kinda got taken out.
Yeah, the eight tracks, yeah.
I seen the video where they handed kids albums, and they were trying to figure those out, and they just turned them into frisbee. No, not my Beatles white album, no. Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that one, that was funny.
So funny.
I saw one where Dad, you know, his son and a friend gave him like three minutes to figure out how to make a phone call. Pushing the numbers, just thinking of all. And they're like, why does, what is he gonna do that for?
And then they don't know that you have to take the receiver. Cause like, okay, I got it, and he lifts, what's that noise?
I seen the one where the kid's like standing there with the, with that phone in the mirror, and he says selfies back in the nineteen eighties. There was one that showed like a sales ad from like Radio Shack, I don't know what year it was, I'm gonna say late eighties, early nineties. All those things that you would buy, like a tape recorder, a scanner, and all that stuff, for now on the phone. You wonder why we don't have Radio Shacks anymore?
Where I lived now in the nineties, we were still on a party line.
Were you really?
Yes, so what age are you in the internet? Like, you know, timeframes, it's like, you know, like old people or fresh people that are as now, it's like, you're asking about like Think here's what's so amazing is how new technology still is.
Yeah.
It's not that old.
Quarter of a century. I mean, really, I mean, the internet's been around a little while longer than that, with regular public use, I'm, I remember the whole AOL thing back in ninety four, I'm like, what is this, this couldn't make any sense. And you wonder why people run away from you, Becky?
I bought one of the old back phones.
Yeah.
Off of, uh, off eBay. I bought one, it's just, uh, sitting in the house, and, oh my kids, it's like, you mess up, or you break your phone, or whatever, this is what the kids, and they're like, wow, oh my goodness, like, what is that? I'm like, that's the first phone I had right there.
Just the first TV we had.
Well, that's, I don't know, twenty years ago, there was a guy I worked with, and he was saying, cause then if it's phones in the car, seeing it's a little bit smaller. The key with the car, you can get it attached.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you can get, he said, oh yeah, I says, in five years, there was a, you get, you know, there's a car, we had a phone built in. Just about some years later, all of a sudden, a cellphone, nobody has a phone.
Yeah, I remember those, that was a big like suitcase thing, yeah, you flipped open, pulled up the antenna, went into the cigarette lighter, that's something you'd also don't see in cars anymore, and, yeah, boom.
No, it's a, it's there, it's a
Charger now.
Yeah, charger.
Yeah, give a kid nowadays a cigarette lighter to plug in and look at it, see what they do, and said, that might be dangerous.
There are some of those fancy cars that had like a little one there, and one on the side, and one on the back, had like four lighters in the car.
Oh, really? Or just smoke it inside.
Don't really just get a poultry.
Nail poultry very well. If anything, very well.
Just a little bit flipping over.
Yeah, a little clean window, yes. That was the air conditioner. On the car.
Right.
Great truck, that was the air conditioner. One buddy's that you say on your kids' air conditioner was four fifty, four sixty air conditioner, four windows down going to the top.
Except the big, you know, two-hand remote.
Ready to start our discussion, we'll walk down the angles. Start, I just want, you know, we were all there, I thought it was a great presentation last week, heard from a lot of people, heard a lot of stories from people, a lot of information about what's going on up there. I thought it was like great, even better than I expected, I, you know, enjoyed it. I just wondered what you get, what was your opinion of it, what did you think?
Well, I, I really like meetings like that, you know, and it was a real chance for me to meet people and to listen to the comments, and, you know, um, I thought it was it was, it was very enlightening, um, to hear from everyone, and, um, I think one of the things that struck me the most as the, you know, as far as inequalities of healthcare up there, or, or that the, the amount of people that actually put there, loved ones in the car and rode, and rode to the hospital. And, you know, as I went home, I thought about that, I thought, oh, what if, what if they would have had an accident on the way? And, you know, that, or hit somebody, or ran off the road, or got stopped speeding, you know, uh, you know, there are all sorts of things that could happen, so I think that really that was very that was hard, that was a very heart, heartening kind of emotional kind of thing, so.
And obviously, I've heard about this for a long time, that the ones we've had calls to, I've said, how many? I mean, I knew, I knew people that've been, you know, the numbers that have just put in the car, but it's surprising to me.
It looked like, again, that crowd was probably about a third maybe of the So, um, I mean, that was very impressive to see that, not good impressive.
Yeah.
No, I, it was really pretty much what I kind of anticipated. It didn't really you know, I don't remember who it was, Ash, you know, put yourself in her shoes, and I, I realized that, and my family lives out in the South County. And we've had to, we've had to take mom in, um, via truck, um, same thing. Fortunately, it was an allergic reaction and not a stroke, thankfully, and I realized that not everybody, um, suffers that same kind of love. I know for me, unlike the other two, I've been talking and discussing this issue for well over three years, and can't seem to land on a place in a place to figure out how to do this effectively and appropriately. So I don't know what that answers still at this point in time. Not taking anything away from what anybody has discussed, but I think there's still a level of some things that we still need to discuss and work through and find the best possible answer to that, not just in the present, but for the long term, for future generations, so on and so forth. Got still amount of information on this, new information on this, that I'm kind of sifting through and asking questions about, and offering some thoughts, and then follow-up questions, that's just kind of a process. And kind of still where I said, like, hearing from some people in my district. Some want the same thing, some of them aren't happy about it. There's not a perfect balance in any of this at this point in time, understand that, but, um, still a lot of things to discuss.
And I mentioned that to South County, almost same place down there, it's fifteen minutes from downtown. If there was one, the best possible location, but one in North County, is to get it to that to fifteen minutes, but it's right now, it could be forty minutes. And I don't think, um, I thought it was the same thing. To me, it's obvious that we need to put a station up there, you have with the, our money to renew headquarters, what have, I mean, it's not gonna be a huge thing. Like I say, basically, you need a small house and an oversized garage, that's what, that's what it comes down to.
Kitchen, a bathroom.
A small house with some sleep, you know, some living quarter and a, a couple, some sleeping rooms. And lodge probably bigger than the house, you know, to get all your stuff in. And we got a chance to do that now, I think, I think we need to do that. As far as location, again, I always thought Londonville, but, uh, so brought up, just brought up, said Randolph, if, should I thought, talking about taking one out of the shop, put one in Randolph and kept one in the shops, like, no, that's the best coverage up there. It also allows another one in, even right now, the one in the shop, that's in Manhattan more than it does in North County. But that would be, to me, that's I mean, I think we need an ambulance.
Well, I've done a lot of investigation, I, I've written with EAM, you know, with ambulance, looked at all of the units in the, uh, county, and also the fire stations. It's amazing the coverage we have, and we've learned a lot, talked to a lot of people. I mentioned this morning that I talked to the AMAS director in Leavenworth. And, uh, of course, they have a different population, different type of county, but, um, he, uh, he talked about that if, if you've got service, somebody, if it takes thirty minutes to get to a place, you really don't have any coverage. And, uh, that, uh, was something that, you know, really rang bell. And then what, one of the, another letter that we, we received from the school board really drive home the amount of people that are on the road, and the amount of events that are happening with the school districts, you know, and all the nursing homes, and you know, churches, all these, all these activities that are going on, and, which I wasn't aware of, so that was my thoughts are that, um, are that we need service up there, that it is, and it's not equal for the kinds of services up there as we are getting here in city and, uh, the whole county. Same with the ARPA funds, that, uh, we do have an opportunity to, um, build facilities and whatever goes along with that. But I would like to see, um, do some coverage prior to that. Year to transition, if that one to transition into a full ambulance service, so probably will change that. I, I'm not sure with the ARPA funds, we'd have to have something built by twenty four.
You just have it, you have to have a, a plan for it, right, it doesn't actually have to be built.
We have to have it automated, so we would have to have a contract signed.
Yeah, I have, you know, I've seen enough, I've heard enough, I've talked to enough people, um, I would like to see us move ahead and get this done, um, you know, the next year or two.
I think for me, I'm okay with using ARPA funds to build a facility, and, and I agree with you, Commissioner Kenley, uh, it's not gonna be a Taj Mahal, it's not gonna be anything fancy. We're gonna have to buy a property somewhere, or maybe that can be donated, whatever, that, that's fine, that can all work into that equation. I think the hangup, the biggest hangup for me still is operating costs and personnel. And as you've seen from our update on Monday, we're certainly with personnel, right now as it is already, we have a seventy percent overtime. I know it's budgeted at this point in time, but a gap in there, so, you know, we've got to figure out a way to do that, and it's gonna always be problematic. Particularly when you're rotating four to six people into that equation, and I also think that we have to get new ambulance to do that, to facilitate it properly, is that right, David?
Yes, that's correct, we would, we would have to buy a new ambulance, you know, um, uh, we could, we, we have a new one coming.
Right.
And so we could, instead of getting rid of one, that like we typically do, we would just keep our backups like we have. So we could do something, uh, with the ambulance, as far as, uh, putting an ambulance up there, we could do something probably this summer. So depends on when, when this one arrives.
Sure.
Probably it'll be June when it arrives, takes a couple of weeks for the radios and such put in. But once we did that, then we've, then, we'd be able to use a vehicle that was gonna go offline, if you will, into a backup mode. We would, we'd have to just keep it in the fleet.
Okay.
Uh, operational, which, which we can do, uh, you know, well, I'd put it to, you know, one of the slower stations, you know, so there, there's opportunity there to do that, and could be done this summer.
One of the thing, uh, the, one of the other conversations that came up Thursday that I thought was, um, interesting too, is, is obviously the need to have some kind of an advisory board or oversight board. I don't know what fancy term you add to, do you wanna stick to that, but, you know, um, one of the things I've thought to it'd be a little challenging and cumbersome in the beginning, this developed a, a benefit list up there. And I, I say this because longer term, it will give North County a lot more flexibility in what it can and can't do, and we don't have to keep having these conversations under the Riley County umbrella, so if you wanna add on to your station, you've got the money there, you've got what you need to do, you can do it, or if you want So if you want to add on to your station, you've got the money there, you've got what you need to do, you can do it, or if you want personnel, whatever it is that you want to do, don't get charged twice for an ambulance there. But it's a unique scenario, Commissioner.
And it's not, it's, it's part of the county.
But we've got, yeah. We're going to have to deal with another one and another one at some point in time. I, I've asked this question a couple of times now, and we're, in this, this, this conversation, we're going to have to answer that question too. So if you're going to do it there, are we going to put one down south, potentially over one and all, it's not going to come up in two days or two months.
There is one. It's closer than ninety percent of North County is to the bank, there is one there.
But that, that's the biggest thing that I get from everybody on mine is they're paying for something that they're not getting either. We've had this conversation with all kinds of different things, it just goes back and forth, but it would solve, check off all those boxes. And long term, I'm not talking the short term, I'm talking in the long term, because everybody, whatever that boundary, whatever that setup is. Flexibility to do what they want with the actual service outside of, outside of the county scope.
And while we haven't, I haven't heard complaints from the South County and, and I know that, you know, that could some, come up somewhere in the future. But it seems like we have some uh, huge issue right now that we need to deal with. And I would like, like to see something immediately. I know, you know, I'm always physically conservative. Which I've always, I've looked at that way many, many times. But I think that this is something that is beyond that. It's more of a, it's a health issue that people expect to have services. For their health, all people services that the city and the rest of the county does. It's um. You know, we will have a short term buildup, I would think, until we get the proper personnel hired and trained and. That kind of how long would it be, something like that.
To, to hire personnel?
Yeah, to find personnel with staff like.
It would take several months. And uh, are, are you talking the two people alternative until we get a station built? Or are you talking, what, I guess, what question are you asking?
Well, you know, um, I, probably until we get a full station built, what is, you know, how long would it take you to gear up to staff?
Uh, it, it, it typically takes us about two months, two and a, two and a half months to get somebody through their. Through their onboarding process and, and released. So um, and then, you know, we'd have to start advertising for it, uh, because we're not advertising for full time right now. So um, you know, first thing I would do is I'd reach out to our PRN staff. And s- especially the paramedics and see if there's any who are interested in full time. I don't think that there are, but I, I have not asked that question. So, but uh, you know, we, we can open it up and start advertising, you know, very, very soon, as soon as I have the paperwork signed. We'd, we'd start advertising for that and we'd move as quickly as we could. You know, yes, the, the, the question that has been asked or it's been discussed about staffing issues. And, and that is going to be a concern. But I think there are ways we can overcome that. Okay? But just for an example, uh, I received a mailer yesterday uh, from Olathe Fire Department who are hiring EMTs and paramedics. And what they're doing, staffing is so difficult that uh, so it's example, if you're a five year paramedic. You would start there as a five year paramedic, five year pay, five year. You know, your accrual for over, or for vacation and all of that. I mean, that's, that's where people have gotten to do this. I'm not saying that's what we'd have to do, because I haven't asked, you know, we haven't put it out there to see. I think if we don't, if we can't find the paramedics to do it, uh, there are ways we can adjust our operational model. To help make this happen. So um, I ultimately would like to have, you know, in, in the, in the perfect scenario, we'd like to be able to hire two paramedics. To build this, uh, and that's what we should, we should strive for, because, you know, there's pressure from every department, you know, with their staff. You know, everyone might staff members got that same, that same card going, hey, well, you know, they paid really good and they're going to do this, what are you going to do? You know, I say, well, I'm a smile and it'd be nice to you. You know, I'll give you coffee. But uh, you know, so um, there, there are ways around it. I think there are things that we could do, you know, but it may have to change our operational model a little bit. Which is not out of the ordinary, uh, it's not something that can't be done, uh, but it's not something we've had to do up to this point.
Is it possible to get kind of an estimated and elongated cost of personnel, cost of equipment? Not the building, just, just the operational administrative things for this?
I have some of that now in anticipation of this. Josh, Josh has worked on this for me. Uh, we have not taken this to Elizabeth uh, yet, but. But I think we're, we're fairly, we're probably pretty accurate. So for a two person station.
I thought we needed a three person.
For, even a two year six. So for, for the, doing the two people in, in the meantime, right? You know, we estimate the, the cost for, for two paramedics, overtime, benefits. You know, we have to have some, some ability for when they take off to, to, to cover that. We estimate it to be about a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year. So get one seventy nine, five twenty two, fifty three. So um, that's what, that's what we estimated with cost, that's starting, you know, the paramedics at a, a, a step three. Which is mid-range, because you never know, you know, we may get somebody who's got ten years experience, or we get people who've got one year experience. So um, and then for a full station of six persons with the same formula, the, the, their, their hours, their vacation time. So, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up, for the um, for the three people, uh, I said one eighty, it'd be, it'd be two oh five. I didn't, he had that calculated separately for the, for their vacation time and all that. So but for uh, uh, six, six persons full time, three paramedics, three EMTs. We come out to about six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
That's just from personnel side.
Personnel side, that's correct. So for a station, the ongoing maintenance is not much, you know, cleaning supplies, you know, we'll have the heat. Utilities, that sort of thing, but uh, you know, these are, I, they're more than buildings, essentially is what they are. With, you know, bathroom, shower, office area, living quarters, like you said. So um, there's not a tremendous amount of ongoing. You know, cost for that, so I did get a quote, if that's all right. I did get a quote from the ambulance, I got it yesterday, actually. So um, so this is the ambulance, this is the, the power load system. The cot, because we'd have to buy all new, because we don't have, so ambulance, power load system, cot. CPR device. Radios, cardiac monitor. All of that, all in, um, is four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And uh, if we were to order today, we could expect delivery in two years. For late first quarter of twenty twenty four.
Go ahead, Tammy.
So I have a question, and maybe a Russell question, but would there be any land that we already have that has a fire station on it? We would save some cost.
Yeah, I don't know that.
So there is quite a bit of county-owned land in Linnerville. And then um, Mayor of Randolph showed us some land behind the fire station that the city owns. That could possibly be used, but it'd have to be evaluated by John. Wasn't the level us, but and how the street or if it's an alley actually accesses it, so. Yes, there is.
Preservation.
There's the old fire station that belongs to the city, but David and I went with the, I don't, I think it's pretty substantial.
Because, I mean, the door isn't big enough.
Right, and it's, it's pretty substantial.
I didn't begin it, but I went around, look, we kind of see the sizes in the door, I bet that's.
Yeah, we, we walked all through it, went out. Yeah, it, it's not going to be big enough.
That means that suggests that we're just not, but it's just not enough.
Yeah, we, you know, Russell and I talked about that, tried to look at it, and there's many different ways as we could. You know, if that lot were, were big enough, we'd have to just tear down that building.
That other lot that's in the county or the county. Yeah, there's a big piece of property.
Yeah, it's on the south side of town.
So if either the city of Riley or Randolph, the county wouldn't have to purchase any property, correct? If they're putting a station there?
I have no idea.
I just want to make sure everyone's clear. That's what it sounded like to me, but I just want to be sure everyone's clear.
Linnerville wouldn't have to purchase anything at Riley, the mayor, which. Yes, Randolph, the mayor said that may be available to us. Obviously, the city council will have to vote on that.
I just want to be sure everyone's clear.
Now, is this something that the um. The, the group that's uh, looking at our EMS system could look at the location. Like our.
Oh, our images?
Could look at the different locations between Randolph and Linnerville.
That's outside of the scope of what we asked everyone to bid on, so it could, we could easily have some, we could eas- easily have someone do it. I, uh, that might be a clancy question, because that isn't something that everyone was opened up to do, so. Either way, it could just die.
And do you think, I mean, would you want them, or do you think you can evaluate to see which, which line you want?
Oh, I, we can evaluate, you mean the land wise? Well, we, we've looked at, we, we've, we've done, we've, we've looked at all of those. So um, you know, and we've even, I've even gone as far as to say, okay, if we put an ambulance in Randolph, we, and we kept this one at the county shops. Where would be that, that line, right? Because you have to have a line. And it would be either um, uh, either Barton Road to, so Linnerville and uh, University Park would be, would be north. And then everything else would be south of there.
Yeah, and the line between Thrallane, right?
You, you have to look at, you know, response times, you know, so. Yeah, we, we've already done, 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 looked at that to.
Where in correlation is all of that, that going to be with the new fire station we're putting at University Park?
I mean, when you're evaluating, I'm just saying, evaluate that along. We, we did look at, and it, it's, it's four or five miles off the highway. And it's really kind of in man's land when you're looking at all of these. So Russell and I did go and look at that and, and we pulled that up, we looked at these maps, you know, twenty different ways. So it, we did evaluate that, and really it's not, really not feasible for what we're trying to do.
And then, what do you think, do we want to add that to the design of that other one, or maybe just, or just go out and find something else?
You know, I, 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 I'm okay going out and seeing if finding somebody else, a, a local. Right, it is.
And it's just, it's simple enough to where, you know, you know, and we've got other things with that dispatch, emergency management space that just makes that a, a unique scenario. That isn't the case here.
It just might even be faster. I think it'd be faster, honestly.
We just need to figure out where. And when, um, but how long is it? Well, I'm kind of looking at, you know, do we need to put in a, you know. Interim situation before we can get. Do we need to get, do the interim with the SUV?
To spend a lot of money on an SUV for a couple of months.
So, well.
Would you use one of the old Angu, one of the.
What, what I would do, well, I, there's a couple of ways I would go about this, Commissioner. You know, we have SUVs, hopefully are, are being, going to start being built. We would, we would, uh, one of, we would, what I could do here in two months, right? Josh's SUV, I would send it north, because it's the, it is the, the better of the two that we have. And I would give him my SUV, because he runs more calls than I do, my, has lights and sirens, he runs more calls than I do. Um, and then I've already asked John Ellman if the county, there would be a county vehicle, if it could be a car, you know, whatever, for me to have in the, in the interim. So, and then once the new ones came, um, in the interim, I would probably put that, that newer one, you know, up, up there. I, I don't know how I do it, but my point being that, you know, whenever we are ready, personalize. I, we've got pants in place, we pull the trigger. So we're not going to need to wait on, on the SUVs or, or anything like that. That, that won't be an issue, so, and we could use the equipment that we currently have to, to equip it. I'm going to have to, to back though, buy some of that equipment, because we, because that's our spares. You know, but again, you know, it, we're lucky, now, now's not standby season, you know, which is what we use a lot of that for. And then if you buy it now, when the new station is built, that equipment just transfers over. So, you know, um, so there's no waste for anything there, so.
And if, if we did do the temporary one at Linnerville, because I know you've been, have you got place to put that vehicle? Because you're, you're going to take one of the trucks out of Linnerville. Now, if you move it over into their old steady one for a few months until, if it's just temporary. Well, it, it would depend on, we would need clarification on, is it just a daytime coverage or just a daytime coverage? Are you the one person twenty four hours, I need sleeping quarter? We would need that clarification from the commission on, on what you want to do or not, to answer that question. Well, and I assume we're just talking about the day.
That, that set number I gave you was six five.
If they're doing that. Yeah, they, they could hang out at the fire station. If it was just for a few months, it, it, it wouldn't be that intrusive. Have to rearrange, get a different type of traffic to cover. They did not talk about that, so. To give a hard answer, I need a, a little harder time. I'm just trying to look in general, see what. I think that would, and I'd say, and I know, just in interim, one of the things that I've learned that, meaning I didn't realize, when. When we were talking about just a daytime, uh, paramedics up there, because you said the first responders in the area, whoever, you know, from, from Pat's numbers. Twenty years ago, we had thirty eight first responding, and first responders is just someone tasked with medical training, not just. Fire department, they have a medic training, two, twenty years ago, we had thirty eight, now we've got, he said maybe a lot. Yeah, that's just, we just don't have the, there aren't the volunteers up there to cover that type of stuff. But it'd be nice to have one during the day for a while, so that, as a first step.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and part of the reason why we did that, the twelve hour, was because we could do that pretty quickly with that location. You know, if I said it's got to be a twenty four hour, that's a whole, that's a game changer, time wise.
And if you go to twenty four hour, it might as well make it a thing.
Yeah, because you'd have to, it, this facility wouldn't hold them to be the first sleeping quarters and all of that.
Do you think, uh, um, do you think, Kevin, you were talking at one point about volunteers? Do you think we could vet, get more volunteers um, in the area?
Absolutely, there just has to be a program in place to reach out to the public. And I think you'd be surprised, you know, how many people go. Or even the fire department. Because this is more important than.
Thanks, getting more volunteers and.
And there was work, look, volunteers. But I think. I would go and make a motion that we uh, start working on an ambulance in North County, the location to be finalized. Again, between Randolph, Linnerville, and just in the county shops. You can, you can tell us which, which way you think works best, but I want to go ahead and uh, start working on an ambulance facility for North County. And in interim, the uh, twelve hour.
The, uh, twelve-hour day, they're headed through Leonardville station.
I would second that.
Moving second again, to, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, so, so, um, when you said you start working on that, um, are you, so we can, I can have, uh. HR come in with position requests?
Yeah.
And, and then you guys work.
And work and start finding an architect that, kind of, put out the, what are we going to do to get this to.
Okay.
Find some design and stuff, and this would have to be funded, put through that, uh, ARPA funding.
Okay.
ARPA motion.
So how do you want to do, um, like for the personnel cost, because now, keeping in mind, none of this is in my budget.
Right.
So, I, you know, Rich, you're going to have to help me, help us with this.
Staff, staff will get together and bring a proposal to the board with how, what we think's best to move forward. Personal parts actually, probably easiest, because it's going the quickest, especially for the temporary, that won't take long.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's finer details, but just to get the general, to get the general head start.
Yeah, we'll get working on that and we'll bring you.
Looking, moving second to add, uh, North County ambulance station, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
I don't have anything further, I'll go and make a motion, we adjourn the February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, meeting in Riley County Commission.
One second.